Good evening. This is the regular meeting of the Zoni Board of Appeals for the Town of Newcastle, October 28th, 2019. We have one extension.
Permission request for 46 Red Oak Lane LLC. Looking for another six months to start. And we had problems getting our paperwork ready and everything else.
So my only question is, would that be effective now? Or would it be effective in December?
Yeah, try to, you know, when they really run out? What's their run out date? Red Oak Lane?
I believe around two, around, I mean, forty, forty-six. Six months to start has passed.
They have passed the six months?
Yeah.
So we'll give them six plus on that. I'll make that motion.
I'll second. All those in favor say aye. Mr. Chairman, there's one other item that was on last month's agenda. There was a request for an extension on Bunaki. We've been advised that the work is actually started, but they want eighteen months to complete rather than the year to complete from that date. It was in the minutes. It'll be in the minutes that you're approving tonight, but a minute should reflect if the board, so is amenable that it be eighteen months to complete. Right.
Why didn't you make the time?
There is an extensive wetland mitigation plan that has to go into airfield construction, so they're not going to be able to make that by springtime. They're going to need until the fall to do that.
In that case, I'll make a motion to grant it in the aftertime.
I'll second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
So that's an eighteen month, that'll be eighteen months to complete.
Eighteen months. This public hearing is the State of Marion Kits and Trust.
So we're going to hear the Kits application. Anyone who's here for any other matters, you don't need to be in the room, we'll call you and you can come in at that time.
Hopefully, we'll be seated.
So the purpose of this evening is for the applicant and anyone else who wishes to speak to this matter to add to what already exists as it relates to the public record. So it's not necessary for anyone to repeat what we heard last month. And we also have received voluminous material, some of which has come as late as today. And so at the conclusion of hearing this matter this evening, we will allow for other written information to be received by the board for consideration before next month's meeting. So, did you want to start?
Chairman Cooper, members of the board. We have all received at the very last moment voluminous correspondence and reports from the parties opposing this application. Of those materials, only Mr. Schwartz's letter addressed what we believe is the essential threshold issue, which is, is the merger provision enforceable? And is it applicable under these circumstances? We have presented what we believe is strong evidence that it is so ambiguous that it should not be applied under these circumstances. And these circumstances are that there's one non-conforming lot, Lot 15, and the adjacent lot, which is Five Alden. Five Alden is non-conforming. Five Alden is also improved. And we believe it is impossible to enforce that particular provision under those circumstances. And we believe a reading of the clause makes it clear that it was never intended to be enforced under those circumstances. Mr. Schwartz submitted a letter in which he tried to argue that it was not ambiguous. And if I may, essentially, his argument is that where the second adjoining lot is improved and it's non-conforming, that the clause or so much as is necessary in the merger provision should not be applied. And that what should be done is simply combine both lots. The problem with that argument is that in order to come to that conclusion, you have to read everything into the merger clause. The merger clause doesn't say that. It doesn't say anything about the circumstances under which the phrase or so much as necessary should be invoked. And given the fact that the merger clause itself doesn't give us any guidance or criteria under which that phrase should be invoked, it is simply ambiguous. And if it's ambiguous, then it cannot be applied against the property owner, and therefore the determination of the building inspector should be reversed. It's also ambiguous in the sense that, and I think one of the members of the board posed this question last time, what, it doesn't spell out what is meant by necessary. Necessary for what purposes? Does necessary mean necessary in order to make a full conforming lot? Or does it mean something else? Does it mean necessary in order to not render the other lot non-conforming? There's no guidance. So both in two respects, the clause is ambiguous. Mr. Schwartz's efforts to call it unambiguous don't make it unambiguous. And accordingly, we would urge that the board determine that the denial of the building permit was improper, should not have been denied, and reverse it. If the board, now, most of the other material, all the other material, addressed other issues. If the board would like us to address those this evening, we're prepared to do that. But we got those other materials either Friday or today. And we very much appreciate the opportunity to be able to respond to those materials within a short period, seven to ten days after today's meeting. One concern I would like to express to the board is that the contracts that were entered into for the sale of both parcels have contingencies. Those contingencies expire at the earliest, meaning the one contingency expires, I believe it's on November 29th, and the other contingency expires on December 2nd. We would ask that if, with all due respect, if possible, a determination be made by the board sooner rather than later, so that we're either able to satisfy those contingencies, or frankly, I think it may not be possible to satisfy them now, but with a short extension of the contingencies, we're able to fulfill the contracts.
If we were to tell you that this matter will be resolved as it relates to this board coming to its conclusion at the December meeting, could you now take whatever actions are necessary to get extensions of those contracts ordered?
I mean, clearly, the extensions would depend upon the purchasers, but I think it's reasonable to expect that we would be able to get those extensions, we would be able to proceed and preserve the contracts. Yes.
So if counsel agrees with this, I think that is the ambition of this board, to continue this matter and have a resolution that the board can vote on by the December meeting.
What date is that? Do you have a few minutes?
December 18th.
Yeah, I mean, absent information coming out that requires further meetings or further responses, you know, obviously, there are contingencies, but, you know, assuming the public hearing is closed tonight, that would be a reasonable schedule to anticipate then.
Now, briefly, I'd like to address the other materials that were submitted. And there are just a couple of points I'd like to make, and then I would turn it over to Mr. Ryan to address the other points. First is there was a story about the predecessor to the Kitses having spoken through his realtor. His realtor spoke to somebody with the town. Somebody with the town said something that led them to believe that the lots could not be sold separately. That was forty years ago. It's all second and third person hearsay. And frankly, it's no more binding upon the Kitses than is the statement made by the tax assessor that the two lots can be sold separately. The issue is the application of the merger laws. Secondly, I'd like to address some statements that were made about the use of the property. There were statements made that the Kitses maintained some of the trees within the lot that's in question. There's nothing inconsistent about maintaining trees within that lot between doing that and considering that lot to be a separate lot. They were taking care of the property. And also, the predecessor had said that he considered the two lots to be a single lot, and yet, in the same breath, he says, "And I tried to sell the Lot 15." That, it's inconsistent. And frankly, it all boils down to, is the Lot 15, is there a merger? And as we said before, there can't be a merger because of the ambiguities of the statute. Also, questions were raised about the number of bedrooms. And at the last meeting, I said that my understanding was that it was certainly being sold as a two-bedroom home. I've learned a little bit more about what happened. It seems as if what happened with respect to the number of bedrooms is that the original CO was for a two-bedroom house, that the Kitses predecessor did some renovations. The plans that I've seen for those renovations do not show the additional, the rooms that were constructed as being bedrooms. Mr. McGur, the predecessor, sold the house to the Kitses as if it was a four-bedroom house. They bought it as a four-bedroom house, but they never used it as a four-bedroom house. When my firm got involved with representing the Kits estate, we saw both the septic permit and septic approval and the plans. We saw that it was not a legal four-bedroom house, it's a legal two-bedroom house. It was sold, the purchaser, I believe, is right here, and he would be prepared to tell you he bought it as a two-bedroom house. And certainly, this is an issue that really has no bearing upon this application. The building department, the building inspector, is perfectly capable of, in connection with the transfer, determining whether there's any space that could be considered as additional bedrooms. It's not being sold as a four-bedroom house. Concerns were raised about drainage. I would turn that and questions involving the septic over to Mr. Ryan.
I'm sorry, what is it? Before you get into that, what do you want to tell us about drainage? You know, it's really not jurisdiction.
It's not, it's really not, it has nothing to do with the application.
Right.
And the septic is beyond the jurisdiction of this board.
Department of Health, right.
And it's beyond the jurisdiction of the planning board.
So we don't have to hear about that.
Understood.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay.
My name is Jim Ryan, Principal of JMC, we're the planners and planners for the Kitses. The only comment that I would make is that I think I would default to Sabrina Charny-Holz's memorandum on consistency with the neighborhood. I think one only needs to walk that neighborhood to see that this is a lot which is unusual. It's the only lot in that area that's undeveloped. If you walk that lot, you see no environmental impediments to that. But the real test is dealing with the health department and their requirements for the suitability to do what you want on the property within the framework of the code. And in terms of the buildable areas, those are all matters for the building department and the health department. We've done the appropriate testing that we had to do because at one time, they felt that this particular lot was actually, based on information, was two lots. So they went through a whole health department procedure to look at that, too. There is information from an environmental consultant that's questioning the soil suitability. You can do that based on GIS or USGA mapping, which we customarily do when we don't have access to the property to do actual testing. So that was actually done. So, you know, I'd ask the board to consider Sabrina Charny-Holz's memorandum in terms of consistency, and we agree with that wholeheartedly. So, thank you.
Who's next? I think that was the episode number of the committee. Is there anyone representing the neighbors who would like to be heard? If not, we'll move on to the next matter.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Members of the board, Brad Schwartz from, I was waiting for him to finish his presentation. From Zarin and Stein, we represent Jane and Stephen Scheinfeld, the owners at Ten. Winthrop, joined this evening by Jane and Stephen, as well as Peter Gregory, their engineer, and Cliff Davis, my co-counsel on this matter. I wasn't planning on writing any more written submissions on this, but given that there will be a time period to do so, I will respond to the applicant's October 25th letter with respect to merger in a subsequent short written submission. I want to address the merger points tonight. We'll get on to some of the more technical comments. Just to address what was just raised about septic and the jurisdiction of septic. No question, DOH is the ultimate permitting authority on septic approvals. However, both your board, as part of the five-factor variance test, right, the fourth factor is environmental impact, and the planning board is part of subdivision, no question has the authority to ask and inquire about septic-related issues as it affects the division of land and the granting of variances. And the ultimate permit for the septic approval, it's always made a condition of a board's approval, right? Go to the outside agency for the final approval. But as part of secret, as part of the subdivision review, as part of your variance analysis, you absolutely can look into the septic issues as it relates to what you're being asked to do as part of this application, which is to create two new substandard lots. So I would respectfully ask the board, following Mr. Davis's presentation, Mr. Gregory will present his questions on septic. There are certain unanswered questions that we believe need to be addressed before your board or the planning board can meaningfully consider whether this property can be divided into two new lots.
What questions do you intend to raise regarding the septic?
So Mr. Gregory will explain them, but it all goes to the ultimate question as to whether, where, if at all, can a new property line be located? Because we believe a portion of the wooded area is necessary to support the viability of the existing septic system for the existing residents. So we're not here questioning the septic just in and of itself, it's as it relates to where, if at all, a new property line would be located. The applicant is asking you to simply restore the property line that was shown in the 1938 subdivision map. We're suggesting that based upon information we have in 2019, it's not as simple as just restoring the old subdivision map. There are real engineering questions as to whether or not the line in that location makes sense. So we do believe it's very germane to your five-factor variance test and to a subdivision review by the planning board. So I will rest, I will put in additional written comments, and I'll turn our presentation over to Mr. Davis.
Good evening, Mr. Cooper, members of the Zoni Board. My name is Clifford Davis, White Plains, New York. There's a fundamental gap in the applicant's application. The applicant is asking this board to take Lot 15 as a separate lot and to go to Mr. DePaul in the building department and just ask for a building permit. The property was upzoned. He has not demonstrated in any way that it's been grandfathered. The Kitses purchased the property in 1978 when it was upzoned to be a one-acre property in 1949. So there is no analysis by the applicant, and he's not seeking a variance for just that simple Lot 15. So it is nowhere to be seen. Next, I'd like to address the five-part test. The critical issue before this board is what is the injury to the community? So let's analyze what Mr. Pollak has said in his brief. He has told this board at page 26 of his memorandum of law that the house is moderately sized. He then says that it's a modest house. He then says that it's going to be a house on a lot which is similar in size to the substantial majority of the other lots in the neighborhood. I submit to this board, who cares what the size of the lot is? The critical issue before this board is what is the size of the house on that lot? They don't tell you that. I actually called up Mr. Pollak, and I said, "Your application doesn't say it." And he stumbled on the phone to me, and he said, "I don't know, I'll get back to you." And he sent me an email, and he said, "It's in the building permit." So the house, which is modestly sized, which is moderately sized and modest, is a 5,814 square foot house. Now, I don't know how he can say that that is moderately sized and it's modest. So the issue on the balancing test is what is the size of the house on the lot? Now, we retained the urban planning firm of Ferrendino and Associates.
I'm sorry, are you going to tell us about other houses in the neighborhood?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. And if you look, what we provided to the board on my, and I apologize, we got it in today, but that's when we got it in, doesn't make the evidence any less good. It's all there.
It will be considered.
Yes. So if you look at the appendix, in the back, it has, what we've created is a seventeen-lot neighborhood based upon Mr. Ferrendino. And that is based upon four houses on Alden and thirteen houses on Winthrop. And Mr. Ferrendino, Ferrendino Associates concluded that the average-sized house in the neighborhood is approximately 3,000 square feet, and the average-sized lot in that same seventeen-lot neighborhood is approximately 1.18 acre. Now, the applicant hasn't given you any information. The applicant has the burden of proof to demonstrate to this board that this modest and moderately-sized house fits in and doesn't affect the character and the quality of the neighborhood. They have not given you any evidence. We're giving you the evidence, and the evidence is, it's a 3,000-square-foot house in this community on, actually, the average-sized lots are much larger. So if you have a 5,800-square-foot house on a 1.18-acre lot, that's a lot different than a 5,800-square-feet house on a non-conforming-sized lot, on a size lot. So the information is set forth in the appendix. We have a photograph of the neighborhood that is at issue. It is over here, it's in the back of the appendix. Now, in Mr. Pollak's brief to this board, which I must say was not so brief, he basically states that he compares his application to this board as essentially putting in a key on a piano or completing the smile. So let's take that. If we look at Five Alden, what is the square footage of that house? That house is 1,000, I believe it's, is it 1940?
Fifty-five.
Nineteen fifty-five, 1,955 square feet. It's a small, modest house. That's a modest house. Then, you have the Scheinfels at Ten Winthrop, my client. Their house is 3,600 square feet. So if you were a dentist and you were filling in and completing the smile, or if you were fixing a piano and you were putting that key in, what key or tooth would you put in? What they want to put in is a 5,800-square-foot house, which is going to dwarf Five Alden, tremendously dwarf it, and then on the other side, it's going to be 60% larger than the Scheinfels' house. And in the application, it goes through that the average size in the community is 3,000 square feet. So this board, representing the community, needs to tell this applicant, this house doesn't fit. Maybe this house fits in another neighborhood, maybe this house fits on another lot, but it doesn't fit here. And I submit that to you, and this board is intelligent enough to make that determination. Now, there's a second issue, and that brings us back to the septic. And if a variance is granted, the critical issue, if you're going to have a subdivision, and that deals with Mr. Pollak's point four, this board has to have the power and the flexibility that if there is an issue as to the viability of the septic system of former Lot 14, that you need to perhaps adjust the lot lines of Lot 15 and make Lot 15 smaller. And what you have here is you have a two-bedroom house, there's no dispute about that, with one bath, with a septic approval from 1940. And again, those septic approvals are set forth in my application. And all of a sudden, it goes quiet. There is no septic analysis. Now, Mr. McGur puts in, it's been used as a four, and the key issue, and I put in the Department of Health memorandum, it's a memorandum that was submitted by the Westchester County Department of Health to all building permits, to all building departments in the year 2000, and it said to all the building departments, "You guys, the building department, the inspectors, have to make the determination as to how many bedrooms are in a unit." Because how many bedrooms is connected to the capacity of the septic system? And what we have here is we have a conversion of a two-bedroom, one-bath house to a four-bedroom, three-bath house. Now, this is not a subjective test, this is an objective test. If it's a bedroom, and that 2,000 Department of Health memorandum sets forth how you determine bedrooms, it deals with privacy, it deals with connection, how close it is to a bathroom. And Mr. Pollak is very much aware of this, because we litigated this matter, and this board was a party to that litigation. It was the Stein litigation. And I represented Ken Stein as the neighboring homeowner at One Woods Witch Lane. And what happened in that case, which is so critical, why this board should not make the mistake again, is that you had a house that was approved by the Department of Health that was 3,000 square feet, and when it was built, there was a 5,600-square-foot house. And so there was an issue of how you put, you know, the square and the peg or whatever, how it fits, and it didn't fit. And the court was outraged, and the court basically said, "I don't like the way the parties are, you know, there's a sleight of hand, and everybody's moving it around, and nobody's explaining it, and I want you guys to explain to me, because if there's a septic failure, it's going to be very serious. Septic injury is very serious, and it shouldn't happen." And this board should analyze it now, because if there is a subdivision, and if there is the variance, you have to look at the two lots together. And the Kitses made application to the, I believe, the building department, and they said they had one and a half acres. The McGurrs made application to the building department, and they said they had one and a half acres. McGur submitted a letter, which is part of my application, and he says, "It's a four-bedroom house." So if it's a four-bedroom house, they So if it's a four-bedroom house, they can't sell a two-bedroom house and say, "Just, we just want you to use it." If they want, the only way to enforce that is you would have to make them tear down or completely change those rooms. Because this board can't go out there and say, "Are you sleeping?" Or whatever. If it's a four-bedroom house, it's a four-bedroom house. And if it's a four-bedroom house, it has to have a four-bedroom septic capacity. And this board, while the properties are in the same ownership, you guys have to analyze it, the Building Department has to analyze it now and make sure that you're not going to have a situation where Lot 14 fails and they need an expansion, and there's nowhere to go. Because now Lot 15 is sold to somebody else and it's no longer in the same ownership. Now let me get back to the five-part test. Also involved in the five-part test is the issue of whether there is an alternative. Now, the applicant says there's an alternative, but that's not a real house. They just built something to scare the neighborhood, to think that if you don't give us what we want, we're going to build this monstrosity. It ain't happening. Moreover, it's not consistent with the code and is set forth in my application, and as Mr. Gregory will say, "They can't put those paddle tennis courts there, they can't put that swimming pool there." Let them tell you they can, they can't. And moreover, this board, while I defer to your expertise, you really need the help of the planning board. That is something from a site plan analysis that we would ask you to work in tandem with them. And while we're appreciative of the fact that Mr. Pollak raises the issue that the, you know, that they're on a short time span, that shouldn't govern how this board operates. I mean, you could be courteous or whatever, but you got to call it like you got to call it. And I still think you got to bring the planning board in here. One second, I'll be wrapping up. Now, Mr. Pollak says the variances aren't substantial. They're quite substantial. Now, there are court cases, and Mr. Pollak cited them, and they address giving a larger variance, but those cases have a critical component, and that is where there is no environmental impact. So if you need a 10-foot setback, and now you're going to 20 feet and it's doubled and it might be 100%, and there's no real impact on the neighborhood and nobody comes out, the courts say, "Fine." But that's very different here. There's a real septic injury here, and the house is a huge house on a non-conforming lot, and they haven't even come in for Lot 15 to have that variance. So the requested area variances are substantial. Again, there will be an adverse impact on the neighborhood. And then finally, while it's not fatal to the application, this board knows that the Kitces purchased the property in 1978, and they were aware of the zoning. It was upzoned. We argue it was merged at that time, and the heirs don't take the property any different than the Kitces. And I cited a case in there, and also cases that deal with the objective test, not the subjective of what they knew, but the objective, that when you purchase a piece of property, you purchase it at the time of what the zoning is at that time. Now, Mr. Pollak also references a whole bunch of variances at Exhibit 22 of his application. There are no facts in those cases. There are no facts in many of the cases. In other cases, you're talking about inches, you're talking about feet, and in none of those cases that he cites are the facts similar to this situation in which they were trying to build an entirely new house. Now, what would happen if this board turned him down? Would it be a taking? Absolutely not. In order for there to be a constitutional taking of the property, he would have to demonstrate by dollars and cents proof, essentially, that he has no value of the property. The applicant is not entitled to maximize the value of the property. He's entitled to get a fair return, but he's not entitled to maximize the property. So he could build on it, he has Five Alden on it, Five Alden has been that way since approximately 1940, and there's no reason why you can't continue, or they could tear down Five Alden and build a house, and when, if, if and when they come in with that application, we'll deal with it at that time. Sabrina Hall, in her memo, raises, she creates, refers to a neighborhood, and we disagree with her determination of neighborhood. It's really inconsistent with what's out there. I set it forth in my papers. She also refers to a 1957 variance, and what's critical in that variance is that it was granted, but in that case, there was no merger because the lot next to it was in different ownership. So it was a very different case there, and the facts are set forth. So at this point in time, with the, if the board would permit me, Peter Gregory, our engineer, would like to address the board.
On what subject? What general topic?
On septic.
Septic.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. We'd like to hear the abbreviated versions of this.
Mr. Chairman, for the reasons that were already discussed and the examples that were given, based on my review of the material that was submitted and my opportunity to review health department records and the building department files, I believe that there are serious issues related to the septic system that apply to Lot 14, the existing home on Five Alden Road. Originally constructed in 1940 as a two-bedroom home, at that time, there wasn't an area that was allocated or designated for a replacement area or an expansion area. The material that was submitted incorrectly indicates that there is an area available for the replacement of that existing system. I found that that area is not permitted, it is within a limiting distance to a catch basin, and I have some serious concerns about the ability to repair that existing system on former Lot 14, or even to expand the septic if it's determined that the actual bedroom count in that home is more than two bedrooms. I don't think it's as simple as just re-establishing the lot line where it was currently shown based on the 1938 mapping, and I believe that if a proper analysis is performed for the septic area, it's very likely that it will require, I guess, extending into the Lot 15 and taking away area from that portion of the property to apply it to use the, to address the septic. The property is limited, I believe it's constrained, there are indications of ledge rock on the mapping that have been provided, and I even think some of what we'll hear about is the soils are even limited, marginal soils in terms of the ability to absorb water. So I feel that it's critical that a proper analysis is performed on Five Alden Road. In the event that there is something that is found, it could be addressed. If it's not properly addressed, I do believe that it would pose a serious environmental impact or risk, as there is a catch basin in close proximity that discharges directly into a regulated wetland area. So we would like to have that opportunity to be reviewed and addressed properly.
And Peter, in brief, why do you question the number of bedrooms?
Well, we've had an opportunity to see some of the listings that were available indicating a four-bedroom home. We are seeing living space that has changed over the years. There've been a number of projects that have taken place on Five Alden. Living space has been created. Obviously, we haven't had an opportunity to walk into the property, but we have seen photographs, they are referring to bedrooms, and we've even seen architectural plans indicating future expansion, future bathrooms, which could indicate the possibility of having bedrooms. It's very likely that there are four, if not even five, bedrooms in Five Alden Road. And if that's the case, I don't believe that the septic system is sized appropriately to handle that number of bedrooms on the property.
And all that information is in Peter's report together with the photographs you mentioned.
Good evening. My name's Margaret Ferguson. My husband and I made a submission on Friday. I had some written comments, but I had this strong desire to move things along, so I'm going to make it brief. I think I have four points or five points I'd like to come back and make very briefly, but I'd like to introduce a hydrologist we hired, because the story that was told about this property not having water is just not true. I've lived there 30 years. Everybody who lives there knows there's an ice patch in the winter, there's water on the road all the time. I'm an observant person, I'm a gardener, that land is boggy, seasonally boggy. I've seen pooling there myself. My husband reminded me last night that our dogs used to run up there, and he'd brighten the area deceptive, and he would go to get them, and as he put it, his feet would go swish, swish, swish as he walked on the land. So we hired a hydrologist who's very renowned, named Paul Rubin, and I'd like him to come up and make some brief comments, and then I'll come back if you'll just bear with me. We weren't able to be at the September meeting because we had longstanding plans.
We missed you.
Oh. Well, we actually ran the Erie Canal, so we were far away and not in communication. Anyway, I'd like to introduce Paul Rubin from Hydras. Thank you.
My name is Paul Rubin. I'm a hydrogeologist. I run an independent environmental consulting firm. I'm here this evening to raise environmental concerns on behalf of Margaret Ferguson and Mitchell Heinman.
I'm sorry, can I just ask, is this a report that you have submitted to the board already?
I've submitted a report already. This is a follow-up statement, which I'll give you a copy of.
Okay. Because it's not necessary that you repeat, word for word, what you've already submitted, so...
This is, um, new.
This is what?
New.
New, okay.
So as an intro, my past experience includes working at the Environmental Protection Bureau of the Attorney General's Office, and also for the New York City Department of Environmental Protection. An important task that I helped the New York City DEP with was the hydrology-based determination of which lands to target for acquisition, focusing heavily on lands where septic waste would degrade nearby surface water quality. This is critically important to New York City DEP and their filtration avoidance efforts, and it directly relates to the issue of potential area variance specific to the Five Alden Road property. Here, based on my review, the existing septic at Five Alden Road is already failing. This application presents a prime example of physical conditions where E. coli and fecal coliform contaminants have the potential to rapidly be transported into a surface stream and directly to a New York City water supply reservoir from the absorption field on Five Alden Road. There, the low permeability of the wood ridge lowland soil results in a boggy, as Margaret just mentioned here, boggy soil condition, period of water ponding on the absorption fields and related land nearby, and at times overflow into want-to-want to Road. Result in ice patches on that road, at times present a dangerous condition. So let's look at some of the distances here. The distance from Five Alden Road, old Lot 14, the absorption field from there, is less than 50 feet to Winthrop Road. Very close. So this leach field overflow and Winthrop Road runoff flow into a storm drain on the west side of Winthrop Road and are depicted on a GS map provided to you in my report. There were two I provided, and one of them showed this. Stormwater drainage and shallow groundwater flow then flow eastward beneath Winthrop Road for approximately 50 feet, almost no distance at all, until reaching the western boundary of the 100-foot protective buffer that surrounds a 33.2-acre New York State regulated wetland. This wetland is protected under the New York State Freshwater Wetlands Act, and is only about 200 feet from the Five Alden Road absorption field. My understanding of the Five Alden Road house is that it had minimal use until the passing of Mrs. Marion Kitces, and is most likely not in use now. Additionally, there seems to be some discrepancy, as we've heard this evening and before, regarding the number of bedrooms in the house, and thus, the ability of the existing septic system to meet the demands of a fully occupied house, much less that of only one or two people. Soggy ground and potted water above and close to the leach field provide evidence that the absorption field is inadequate, and is almost certainly contributing to degradation of New York City nu croton reservoir water quality. Criteria for granting an area variance, as set forth in Town Law 267, includes assessing whether the proposed variance will have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood or district. Clearly, the antiquated absorption field, about 80 years antiquated, is not in compliance with Westchester Department of Health standards and Town Law 267, because the absorption field is failing and will have an adverse impact on the broader district, New York City water supply. Until such time as a properly functioning absorption field is documented for a fully occupied Five Alden Road house, any consideration of granting an area variance should be placed on hold. It is entirely possible that a significant portion of both old Lots 14 and 15 may be required to protect both the neighborhood and broader New York City district. In the application before you, it is important to examine the whole 1.4-acre lot picture, as poor drainage, failing septic system, and adverse impact on the New York City water supply must be addressed comprehensively. While I am largely limiting my statement, comments here to water quality issues relating to the failing Five Alden Road absorption field, it is worth noting that in my written report, which you have already, I raise substantive concerns regarding the proposed placement of an absorption field on old Lot 15, where an existing absorption field on old Lot 6, which is just a pill from it, may double the septic absolute projected. No one's considered that before. Nearby bedrock outcrops, shown on the applicant's drawings, suggest that the proposed absorption field capacity may be limited, and nearby neighbors have experienced substantial drainage problems in the same soil series, if I have this in mind prior to your submission. So clearly, Town Law criteria for granting an area variance has not been met. Fact-finding must be conducted to determine the actual number of bedrooms in the Five Alden Road house. And importantly, documentation must be provided of a properly sized, functioning, and permitted absorption field. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll take questions if you have any.
Clear. Okay. Thank you for your time.
Oh, I'm done here.
Okay. I read my written comments, and I have five comments I'll try to move through quickly. First of all, Mr. Pollak said that I had a letter, that was me he was talking about, from the prior owner, Mr. McGura, who talked about having the merger of lots law applied to his property. Remembered it clearly from the moment I brought it up, despite the passage of time. Said he very much wanted to sell the lot, because he thought if he could, why not? But he was told no, and he was told no twice. It's not just Mr. McGura saying this happened, it's everybody that we've talked to who was in the area at the time, who bought from somebody in the area at the time, or who bought from somebody who bought from somebody. It's, real estate agents know it. Everybody knows it. I think even the state...
Real estate agents generally aren't the most reliable.
I think, but everybody knew this lot was not subject to division. All right, things change sometimes, but the point is, that's not just a story. I don't know how much better we can prove it. We sent a letter to Mr. DePauli, the Scheinfels, and my husband and I on March 27th. That was well before this, that was within a few days of us hearing about this proposal. And the things we say in there are the same things we're saying today. We talked to at least 10, if not 12, different households, all of whom remembered this, all of whom said exactly the same thing. So the idea that this didn't happen before at Five Alden, it's just not credible. And I'm not saying that, you know, things don't change, I guess things do change, but people bought into that area, being told it's not developable. One house across the street told me that, another one through the sign told me that. I didn't buy, I wasn't told that when I bought, but I made decisions in my yard based on it. I made decisions on where windows went in my house, because I'm on the high corner of the lot, and I knew they could sell the lot as one property, but I never thought the house would come all the way up into that corner, you know? And I have, I've spent 30 years gardening there, I've made a lot of, and I do almost everything myself. That's, this proposal is going to directly impact me, but not just impact me, it's going to impact houses across the street that are in the strike zone for the groundwater. It's gonna impact houses across the street. They're in the strike zone for the groundwater. Out of the eight houses around this property, six, I didn't talk to two of them. Six have had, every single one I talked to, either had to replace their system as we did, two across the street had to, or expand their field. So that's one point. So it's not just one letter from one person. Secondly, I went into how the backyard was used because they made a big deal about it and they made a big deal that it was kept separate, and that's not true. It is part of a backyard. The landscaping is natural on a significant portion of it, but the landscaping, the natural landscaping extends into the other lot too. It's a crescent-shaped border. Marion Kitts called it her backyard. I went in there and cut down trees with her approval because she wanted her backyard to look neat. And we took pictures of tree stumps because they said the only thing they did was take care of trees that fell across Winthrop Road. And that's not true. She cabled trees that I can see from my property. I thanked her for cabling one because it was so important to me. It's right on my property line. It's a tulip tree. And I said, "Mary, thank you for pruning it and cabling it." And we used to have discussions about this all the time. So the idea that they really drilled down hard on that this was a separately maintained investment property is not true. There's no sign of it. It looks like one yard and it is one yard, and that's how she called it. Third, there is no way that any house on Seven Bridges Road down to Lawrence Farm Crossways is part of the Alden-Winthrop neighborhood. No way. I'm as close to Alden Road as you can be and still stay on that side of the road. I didn't, the Seven Bridges houses are separate. The road is too busy. You go to Alden and Winthrop, there's stockade fences bordering on Seven Bridges Road. Nobody on Seven Bridges can see a single house in that neighborhood. Stockade fence, you go on Alden Road, there's a driveway here, there's a driveway there. You go down. It's a quiet, little traveled cul-de-sac area where kids play in the front yard, ride their bikes in the street, dogs are on invisible fences in the front yard. None of that happens on Seven Bridges Road. It's a totally different place. And you can't go from one house to another on Seven Bridges Road the way you can on Alden or Winthrop. I've never considered myself part of that neighborhood. Yes, I knew people back there because I dog walked twice a day with my small dogs, but, and that group is always very close. But Seven Bridges and Lawrence Farm Crossway people being part of that neighborhood in 2019, no way. Looking at a 1938 map to give some sort of concept about what constituted a neighborhood in 2019, to me, is preposterous. The reality is it's 17 houses and that's it. And the state took an approach where they wouldn't even include, I think, six houses on Winthrop Road that start 30 feet away, but they want to include houses on Lawrence Farms Crossway, which are a third of a mile away. That's not the neighborhood you should be looking at. That's not the people you should be protecting. The next point is about the, about the septic. When our system failed, it was built by the same company the year before, the one at Five Alden. It showed signs of failure from the day we got in there. And I put in my, in a declaration, which was, "Our tubs never drain right from the day we got in there." And I was sweating it for years, trying to keep it going, keep it going, until we could afford to put on an addition and then I knew we'd be able to do something about the septic and we made it. But the only reason we made it was because we had a backyard with nothing in it and we had enough room to put in a new septic. And the town, it wasn't Mr. DiPoli, it was Bill Mascula, I think, required us to add two rooms to our septic, even though we only had use for three bedrooms. We had two sons and it was just three bedrooms. One of them was a legally authorized 1959 family room that had a CEO because he said if somebody could sleep in it, they would. For septic purposes, we had to put a five-bedroom septic in our backyard, even though we had no use for two additional bedrooms. And that's, we ended up keeping two on the front yard, I'm sorry, three on the front yard, even though in reality, the way it goes, all the heavy use is because the kitchen and the laundry and all the bathrooms go on the back. So the only thing that goes into our old septic at this point, which actually has been doubled in size, unlike Five Alden, the only thing that goes there is one single powder room. So, the town's position was, we needed to add a proper full-house septic and that included two houses that we didn't, I'm sorry, two rooms that we didn't consider bedrooms, but the town said they should be considered bedrooms. And the same standard should apply here. I mean, the idea that this house has, I think it has five bedrooms, to be honest with you, but the idea that this is somehow gonna slip by because of some sort of technicality, that it's not jurisdiction. I don't even understand it. This is one of the reasons it has to, I really don't know if you, if you do the type of investigation that the planning board does. I'm under the impression this is the type of thing the planning board looks at. And the planning board has a lot of authority...
We do much more than the planning board.
I'm just a little confused about the division of labor here. But my impression is, this is the type of thing the planning board looks at and has the authority to look into. I mean, if you cut down that lot, my septic takes up, and I'm .82, I'm a real .82 acres, by the way, but my house is in the middle of the lot and my whole lawn area is the active field and the whole flower beds are the expansion field. It's the whole thing. It takes a lot of room for a five-bedroom septic or a four-bedroom septic. Just looking at where that dividing line is, because the surveyor's left a pink ribbon showing it, I don't see it. And, you know, I asked Westchester County DOH, I asked them when I did a forelook press, I said, "If this house has an undersized septic, will you take jurisdiction over it? Will you express authority over it?" And the engineer there didn't reply to me. And I said, "If you don't do it, who does?" And he had replied to every one of my other emails. I had the email exchanged to prove it. Last point is, while I obviously think there's plenty of reason for this project not to go forward, if it goes forward, the only way that the harm to neighbors is going to be addressed is if the planning board is involved. I know from watching the planning board meetings, which I actually do watch, I've watched them years and reading minutes, that they will go to great lengths to determine, make conditions to mitigate the detriment to neighbors. And this includes what type of trees are planted as screening, where it's planted. They will recon, they, in one case, they had a septic field reconfigured to save a stone wall. Well, in this lot, there's a 70-foot oak tree that can be seen, Seven Bridges Road, that can be seen from Alden. It's a, it sops up water, it stores carbon, it's an incredible specimen. To replace it, we'll all be dead before anything even approaches this thing. That's smack in the middle of the expansion fields. It'll be cut down if the fields are needed and there's plenty of reasons to think that someday those fields will be needed here. This tulip tree is right on my property line and I may actually have ownership interest in it because of that. It's not much my property line, but it might, it's either a couple inches over or right on it. But its roots are gonna be cut back to such an extent that it's gonna weaken and die. And there's really no need to do this. There's ways to make adjustments. But if it doesn't get to the planning board, nobody's gonna be telling the applicant or the builder, "Why not consider this alternative? How about moving this line here? How about putting these trees next to the neighbor's yard instead of those trees? And that, by the way, the trees should go here and here and here." We have no recourse to minimize the detriment or inconvenience to us. I spent 30 years doing this garden. It sounds, to a non-gardener, this may not sound like much, but there's a lot of trees that could go on the other side of the fence that will ruin all the decades I've spent working on it. And at the very least, I think I should be able to get better trees over there rather than worse trees over there. It's not much to ask. I mean, I don't know what to say. Somebody in the town has to take charge of this project and be there every step of the way because the injustice, the talk of injustice to Marion and Larry Kitts, the injustice here is that all these homeowners are gonna have, who are nearby, are gonna have water problems. There's gonna be a bigger ice patch. There're gonna be accidents. There was always one, already one time a car skidded on the ice patch and landed significantly on the lawn across the street. That's the injustice. Thank you very much.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Board Members. I'm Steve Schoinfeld. The name's been bandied about here for a while, but I'll make it brief. I, along with my wife Jane, own Ten Winthrop. Well, actually, she owns Ten Winthrop, but I lived there. And we've been there since 1996. And at the risk of violating the, you know, the adage that a lawyer who represents himself as a fool for a client, with that in mind, I'm gonna stay away from it. I'm gonna simply point that in the papers, it's already been demonstrated by counsel, by the experts, in very measured tones and thorough, the problems that are presented here as we look at it in terms of the septic, in terms of the water. There's a whole host of problems and it doesn't take really a lot of imagination to see why the applicants have been trying to circumvent having this looked at and to try to have a real assessment of it by coming this way. Nor am I gonna deal with the inaccurate and scurrilous comments that have been made by the applicants because I well know that when those types of comments are made, it's a sign of weakness. It shows when someone doesn't have a position, that they would sink to that. All I wanna say is we've been there since 96. We raised four boys on a street with neighbors that care about each other, that have respected each other and their property. And that from our perspective, and why we've done this to protect the neighborhood, is that the street, the neighborhood, and the community don't deserve to have, what we've heard from experts, about the septic and the water and the drainage, all these problems inflicted upon that neighborhood. At a minimum, the process should be followed. And all we ask quite respectfully is that there be a real assessment and have some due diligence here of really taking a look at these issues, which have been characterized by, you know, really everyone who has come up, you know, as against the application at this juncture, that these are serious problems and that the impact is something that shouldn't be overlooked and they should not be allowed to circumvent the proper process. And as I understand it, that would mean that we would ask that you would enable the planning board to get involved and to have the fact gathering that's necessary. Thank you for your time.
Going once, twice?
So I'm at Two Alden Road. My name is Mike Hanner. I'm at Two Alden Road, which is sort of a kitty corner, I guess, to the property we're talking about. And, you know, I'll keep it brief. I didn't know about a lot of these issues, but hearing this, it's a bit troubling and I just wanted to sort of, I've only been here, you know, a couple of years. So just to echo what I've seen, that all this seems somewhat valid and true because, you know, just two points on what was said. One, in terms of the neighborhood, you know, I made it a point of mine, the house behind mine, you know, it's 20 feet away, but these people didn't know us. They didn't know anybody. We went around the corner once, introduced ourselves, and they were so appreciative because they said, "We've never met anybody in there, you know, we're detached. We have to go on Seven Bridges." So, you know, just, I'd echo the sentiment on the neighborhood. And then just on the water, I guess I didn't appreciate where it was coming from, but just to throw it out there, my son's favorite winter activity the past two winters is taking his little go-kart down to the bottom of the hill and doing, you know, 360s because the whole street is a thing of ice. I didn't appreciate why, but, you know, if that's worse, you know, he enjoys it and he loves it, but I guess these are bigger problems than maybe I appreciated. And, you know, being in this community, I appreciate having you here to sort of look out for those interests and do what's right, you know, for the community.
We'll try to see that the ponding continues.
He would be very happy. Thank you.
Hey, what else? Keep it open as it relates to further material? Will you keep it open?
It's up to the applicants.
Okay. I think it's necessary. Does the applicant require additional time to make any written submissions to this board going forward?
We would ask for a 10-day period to make written submissions that would respond to the most recent submissions from the neighbors.
You're okay with closing the hearings?
Yes.
Other than...
We would ask that the hearings be closed.
The 10-day period for anybody who wants to submit written comments to the board.
Adriana, what would 10 days, what would that bring us to?
As far as...
So that would be November 8th.
The meeting is what?
The 20th of November.
We have about 12 days then, that's...
That's okay then?
Yeah. What is the 8th?
It's a Friday.
Friday. That's fine then. That's a Friday. Yep, that's, that's right. That's what I know, by the end of business, November 8th.
So we'll close the public hearing.
Subject to written... Written submissions by, close of business, November 8th.
Second that?
I'll second that.
Hold us, favor say aye?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you all.
Thank you.
So, where do we stand with the sign application?
Right. So, so we have gone to architectural review. We've made some adjustments to the look of the signs to address those comments. The signs and the variances, those have not changed. We're still requesting the variances. I think, you know, we've put together the evidence that shows why those signs are needed at the site. Essentially, they're in residential zone, which limits it. This is not quite a residential use. The visuals on that too are important for people passive eyes and so on, recognizing the location. So, we ask that the board close the hearing. If they cease to, we're happy to answer any other questions and hopefully a decision so that we can move forward with this.
So you will adopt those most recent recommendations by the ARB?
Yes.
We got a written, there was written comments from the ARB?
Yes. Well, yes, I think so. I mean, they talked about the lettering and what they wanted to see.
So do we want to include those in the resolution?
Yes.
Include those in the resolution?
Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to speak to this matter? No. I move to close the public hearing. Hold us, favor say aye?
Aye.
I'll make a motion.
But we have, I think we have, we have a proposed resolution. Maybe the site plan and granting the variance that we submitted to, that was submitted by council's office to the board. I don't know if you have any comments?
We received it. We reviewed it with our client.
Yes, so the... Right, but I think we should, we should put them in the word for it. You know, we would add the ARB's comments and their judgment conditions.
Tony has a question.
On the proposed resolution?
Okay.
On the last page, the further resolve, number one. The wording looks a little, is it done purposely that way or is it a little...
What does it say?
Where it says, "To allow additional signs will improve the ingress..." Ingress and egress, is that...
Maybe if there's better wording than you...
I don't know. Can you pick that up before we get to file?
Okay.
It's just a little strange to me. Maybe it was done purposely or not.
I think it's, yeah, there's an extra word here, "Will improve ingress and egress to the property."
Okay.
Yeah.
Or identification of ingress and egress.
And improve accessibility, so, or, okay. "Will improve identification of ingress and egress to the property and improve accessibility?" That being acceptable? So, subject to that change and to adding the conditions from the ARB's memorandum, the board could approve the resolution and then...
What's the date of the resolution? Is it today?
Uh, yeah, it would be dated today.
So I make a motion that the board adopt a resolution as drafted as of this date with the additional requirements that have been agreed to from the ARB as it relates to the lettering that will appear on the signs.
And the one additional change?
And the one requested by Mr. Giadina. And the one requested by Mr. Giadina. That is made to the resolution. Hold us in favor to say aye?
Aye.
Thank you.
Hi, good evening. My name is Sean McManus. I'm an architect and I'm here on behalf of my client, Julianne Metzger. Uh, she and her husband reside at forty-one Northway. Um, they are seeking a front yard variance and a side yard variance. I have a site plan. The site plan is so small that I blew it up so that you can read the existing setbacks. Um, the variance for the front yard is to, uh, to build a covered portico. So the hardship there would just be to have a covered entry. The house, um, is currently fifty, fifty feet, um, fifty point nine one feet from the front. So the variance that I'm seeking is no greater conformity, it's actually less conformity. So there's a lot of pre-existing non-conforming, um, with respect to the, to the front yard setback. Then the side yard setback, you can see that currently the house is fifteen point five feet from the side yard. Um, it has, um, currently a deck on the rear off the kitchen in the family room. That deck is a, is, um, is, uh, it's currently twenty-one point five feet from the side yard. And the variance, and the required setback is now thirty-five feet. We're requesting that we can take the deck and replace it with a single-story basement level addition, the roof of which would become the exact same deck that's there right now. So we're looking for, we're looking to build a single-story addition at the basement level and within the exact same footprint of the existing deck. And I brought you a, brought you, and I tried to highlight, I gotta Google it up. If you can see the project, um, you see I linked it in white, that is the existing deck that's there right now. And they're seeking to build a, um, an addition, a single-story addition underneath that deck. So it's within the exact same footprint, but underneath it, yeah. Here's the deck. Removing the deck, building a single-story basement additional, and then having the roof of the basement addition become the deck again in the exact same location, the exact same elevation. So it's no greater non-conforming than what's existing.
Just adding a basement and that's going to be the deck again?
Yes.
Deck's going to stay the same. It's just that we're going to fill it in underneath with a single-story basement level addition. Um, I just wanted to suggest that my client did reach out to all of her neighbors and she got some very positive feedback from them in the event that you had any questions about neighborhood outreach.
No water pondering issues around?
We're high, we're great. We're in a great place. No skating rinks, our children on go-karts.
Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to speak to this application? No.
So this deck is coming down.
We're going to build a single-story addition underneath it in the exact same location. I'm going to bring that deck back because we still need to use it.
I'm good.
I move that we close the public hearing.
Second.
Hold us in favor to say aye?
Aye.
Like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion at the application of Michael and Julianne, Michael Metzger, Julianne Coler, forty-one Northway. For the construction of a, uh, single-story addition on the rear of their house underneath an existing deck and for the construction of a new entry porch, portico, requiring a front yard addition, a front yard variance of four feet and a side yard variance of fourteen feet to be approved for the following reasons. Granting of the variance will not create an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood. There are no other method to, to, to achieve the desired end. The existing residence is legally existing non-conforming, we go up to setbacks and the, um, current setbacks will not be increased. The current, um, legal setbacks will not be increased. There'll be no adverse effects on the environmental conditions. This is not a self-created hardship in the, because of the fact that the house is already legally existing non-conforming and any additions to it would require a variance. Since you're not going to change the footprint, we won't need a foundation survey, but we will give you six months to start and one year to finish. Any questions?
A final survey?
Need a final, even though they're just closing the deck?
If they alter from the size.
Okay, so a final survey when you're all completed.
Hold us in favor to say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Happy quarters.
Thank you for, thank you for your time.
You're welcome.
Con?
Good evening zoning board members. My name is Guy Coon. I'm here representing myself and my wife. We're the owners of the house. I'm also the architect. Um, we're requesting, we're requesting to put in a patio which actually is very close to the side of our property, which is kind of an odd-shaped property. If you look at it there, um, the patio is very close to both a side and rear yard. Uh, the hatched area on the right side is where we're intending on putting in patio. And we also would like to put in a garden shed where there was an old swimming pool at one point that goes back probably to the twenties. Uh, I'm just going to step back for a second and show you the pictures of what's existing there. The old swimming pool, it's not really very well suited for swimming anymore. Uh, however, we're requesting a variance in that particular case because it's too close to the front of the property. So the intention here, if I may shift forward, that's the location, Nine Old Roaring Brook Road. Um, it's down in a valley and there's basically forested area in front of it. And then there are houses, oh, sorry, behind it and houses in front of it. Uh, I have two letters of support from our neighbors supporting this. Um, one from our neighbor to the south. I'll just go to the next slide here. Actually, go to the front. Uh, the neighbors who have given us a letter of support and everybody else we've tried to contact, but they were away. Um, Eleven Old Roaring Brook has given us a letter of support as well as Seven Old Roaring Brook. So they're basically the properties that surround our property, which is landlocked. Go to the next slide. So if you look at the detail, that's the patio. It's basically just a flagstone patio on grade with a couple of steps on it and a trellis above. The elevations show what the house looks like currently and how we're intending on putting the patio as well as the trellis. And ultimately, the intention is for it to look like that. So you can see the patio on the side and the trellis. And the other portion of this application, that's some of the details, um, is the garden shed we're intending on filling in. The swimming pool, um, we've talked to, um, Mr. DePaul and figured out how this is going to be done. And we're just going to put in a prefab shed, which is going to look like that. It's basically fourteen by, sorry, uh, twelve by, ten by fourteen. So we're requesting for the patio, a side yard variance of twenty-five feet, a rear yard variance of four feet, and for the garden shed, a variance of fifteen feet from the front yard. Um, we'd also like to request that we have a little bit more time to finish this up because we don't intend to start the construction until the spring as the ground will start to get hard and we have to engage a contractor. But we're asking for a year from the time that, um, we start the project to complete it and get the certificate of occupancy.
When do you, when do you plan on starting?
Uh, hoping to start in March or April.
Who owns Lot eighteen?
Uh, Lot eighteen?
The one you drive, they run through?
Uh, that's our neighbor who gave us the letter of support.
Where is your house on Lot eighteen?
Um, well, it's actually along the driveway. See if I can go to the next slide. You can see it right to the left of the building, of our house, Nine Old Roaring Brook. It's right along the road and it's a shared driveway. So...
They have no problem with the shed?
They don't even see it because, um...
Have they written a letter approving your...
Yes, they have. The shed is in a valley and the top of the road is, the house is at the top of the road. So there's a considerable slope and then it levels off to a stream.
And there was no other logical location for the patio, um, that would not require any variance as far as the, um, the side yard?
Uh, not to our intentions.
Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to speak to this? No.
The shed that you're going to be building is smaller than the old pool at the same time?
Smaller.
So you won't be increasing that coverage?
No. We're just going to, we're basically going to collapse the old pool in, level it out, and then put the shed on top of it.
Same place.
Same place.
Okay.
I move that we close the public hearing.
Second.
Hold us in favor to say aye?
Aye.
Like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion. I move that we grant the, uh, the variances sought by the Combs for a rear yard variance of four feet. Uh, this is for the, um, the patios. A side yard of twenty-five feet and for the shed, uh, front yard of fifteen feet for the following reasons. Granting of the variance will not create an undesirable change in character of the neighborhood. Um, there's no feasible method other than the variance to achieve the benefit of, uh, of doing this. There is a default pool on the property already that's going to be filled in and this is certainly going to look much better than, uh, that unused, unusable pool. Uh, the variances, I don't believe are substantial. Uh, there will be no adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood by the granting of the variances. And, uh, although it is self-created, um, I don't believe it's, uh, substantial enough to not grant the variance. For those reasons, I move that we grant the variances.
I'll second.
Any surveys?
Schedule.
Six, can you start in six months?
Well, the intention, well, what is that?
So November, December, January, February, March, April, you'll start by April?
April.
And finish within a year?
A year.
Okay, that's good.
So start with six months, finish by eighteen months then?
Start in six months and finish in eighteen months then?
That would be even better. Well, they wanted more, I thought you wanted more than a year to finish.
No.
I, I think a year is fair, but...
Let's do that. Let's, let's start off with six months to start and a year to complete.
Okay, that's fine.
And then if you need more time, then we'll certainly revisit that.
Final survey please?
Final survey for the property. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
I'll second.
Hold us in favor to say aye?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Michael?
Hello, I'm Neil Blacker. I live at fifteen Crowwell Road. Uh, I hired an architect that measured, we had a portico for them. Yeah, I have an architect that measured sixty feet, one and seven eighth inches. And when I had the survey done, it was fifty-nine point three inches. I'm requesting a point seven foot variance.
Point seven, that's a...
Point seven feet. And it's to the street and there's a twenty-five foot drop. I could show you pictures if you really need to see.
If you, it's stretch it out a little bit more, we're not using this.
I thought I was within regulation.
Is there anyone in the audience that speaks to this application? No.
No.
I move that we close the public hearing.
Second.
Hold us in favor to say aye?
Aye.
I'll make a motion. I move that, um, the Blacker application for a one-foot variance, um, for a previously built portico, uh, be approved for the following reasons. Um, uh, this was inadvertent, um, measurement discrepancy and certainly, um, not the, uh, of the property owner. Um, there's been no change in the character of the neighborhood. The benefit cannot be sought through other means or methods. Variance is not substantial. Uh, there will be no adverse impact on the physical environment and the difficulty is not self-created. For those reasons, uh, I move that we approve this.
I'll second.
Hold us in favor to say aye?
Aye.
Thank you. Happy quarters.
Thank you.
Bruno?
Good evening. I'm Rosemary Bruno. This is my guy, Robert Bruno. Um, he's been the owner for fifty-three years at Thirty-Eight Joan Drive. Um, and we are seeking a variance to legalize work that was done to enclose an existing screen porch that is located inside the current setback in order so that we'll be able to sell the house. So that's Michael this evening. This is our architect.
I'm the British strategist. I took a few years. All by myself. Got to make changes in life.
Are you more open at Lifetime Fitness or Whole Foods?
No, I, I'm not, like, I decided not to go there because I...
Where is it? My old gym?
Oh, Club Fit.
Club Fit. I love Club Fit because you like, you know Club Fit?
Sure, of course. Everybody knows Club Fit.
I love Club Fit, so I'm going to go back there.
Okay.
I like it. I really do.
How long has this been enclosed? How, how long ago was the porch enclosed?
Well, it's, it's hard to remember. I tell you the truth. I can't remember.
I'm far back.
You know, we, we just, it, we have a nice tile floor there, steel walls and we, we had a screen. We did close it in so that, that in the wintertime, you could sit out there. You know, if, if it wasn't like now, tonight.
But you never got a permit.
But I didn't figure...
But I figured, I don't know. I don't know. I mean, I just, I'm not, you know, I...
There was something that was there, right? What made it come?
Well, there was no external change.
There was no, you know, just, it just was, you know, fifty-two years ago, in that, if you go down the town rooms and see the listing on my house, it's just, you know, that's what it was. I mean, it's just...
Just for the record that it was there many years?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, if...
And you didn't get a permit, not maliciously, it was just an... Okay, that sounds good to me.
Is there anyone in the audience who speaks to this application? No. I move that we close the public hearing. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Would you like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve the application made by Robert Bruno, Thirty-Eight Joan Drive, to legalize and enclose porch and stairs for the following reasons. The legalization would require a side yard, side yard setback of, required twenty, stairs to the porch required thirty-five feet, proposed twenty feet. Requested variance is fifteen feet. And the enclosed porch requires thirty-five feet, proposed twenty-five feet, and requested variance is ten feet for the following reasons. The structure, the porch itself has been there for many years and the applicant inadvertently enclosed it without realizing that he needed to get a building permit and a variance to go along with it. The, the structure, no neighbors have appeared or written in opposition. The granting of the variance will not create an undesirable change to the character of the neighborhood or detriment to nearby property. No other feasible method is available to the applicant, which is likely to achieve the benefit sought by the applicant. The requested area variance is not overly substantial, but considering the situation and the consequences, should not be held against the applicant. The proposed variance will not have any adverse effect or impact on physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood or district. And although self-created, the hardship is not one that was intentional. For these reasons, I move that we approve the application.
I'll second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Happy variance.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Good luck.
Appreciate it.
We'll see you at Club Fit, okay? See you at Club Fit.
I'm going to see you at Club Fit. Going to go next week. Week after.
Okay.
HMHAJ Properties LLC, regarding property at seventy-five North Greeley Avenue.
Hello. David Graham, representing the Caberraris, the owners of seventy-five North Greeley. The reason we're here tonight is the building, Ravis Real Estate had been there and there was businesses on both floors. And we're planning on converting the second floor to a two-bedroom apartment. There has been a door in the front that accessed a dentist's office and then Ravis. And in the most recent remodeling for the real estate company, it became one door. So, what we're hoping to be able to do is to reinstall the door, you know, on the street. But because it's an apartment, it's not supposed to be on the street. The building is built to the property lines on the side, so there isn't even an opportunity to put a door there. And the building is thirty-five feet longer on the first floor in the back. So, if one were to come up around the back area, you'd have to build the stairs and go up and across, which seems to us unnecessary and impractical. So, we're here tonight hoping that it'll be deemed appropriate to give us a variance to allow us to have the door on North Greeley Avenue.
And is the parking, as it currently exists, does that come into play at all as it relates to access and so forth?
There's a macadamia in the back, but there's no striped or official parking. In eighty-eight, there was a zoning variance granted, waving parking in exchange for an easement. So, there, if we did go to this trouble to build this umbilical cord to the back, you would be going to, well, on the adjacent properties, there's parking, but there's no parking on the property.
Tom, I don't remember the last time something like this came up before this board. Do you want to, anything you want to explain to us?
They currently share parking in the downtown and putting apartments in would be less intensive use than the business use that was there. So, currently, they're using more spaces than they will be in the future. So, this would be less intensive and advisable if it's... And as far as the front entrance, it is the better of the locations and accessible, both for emergency responders and for residents using it.
I was always going to ask that. Is there any reason why the town law would state that there should not be any entrance in the front? Is it aesthetic only or is there some safety purpose?
There was an aesthetic reason based on that you would not be going in and out of your residences while people were going in and out of businesses. But historically in the town, we have a lot of that pre-existing.
Right, right. So, having a door there would not create a situation with regard to safety or...
Not whatsoever.
Okay.
So, that's a good thing.
Thank you.
Wait, would the parking be for this unit?
It's the common...
It's a common?
Car in the back?
No.
No.
It's on the side.
Oh, okay.
They don't need any variances for the parking. They already were granted that in eighty-eight.
Okay. Granted for commercial or residential?
Granted for commercial, which was more intensive than the...
So, they don't have to change the character of that variance?
They don't have to because they already had previous planning board approvals and there was a test of questions that they met all the requirements, so they didn't have to go back to planning board.
Okay. What happened to the motorings?
They were under the size. Yeah. And they're now looking for commercial. They're changing to residential.
I move that we close public, oh, I'm sorry. Anyone here to speak to this issue? Yeah. I move that we close public hearing. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Would you like to make a motion?
Mr. Chairman, one thing, just to make sure we're covered on, this is, even though it's for a residential business, I think this property is technically in commercial, considered commercial.
It's in DR, so it's non-residential use.
Probably just for, you know, administrative purposes. It could be considered as an unlisted action, granting this variance. I think you should just recognize that and make an environmental determination that there will be no substantial adverse environmental impacts from granting this variance. So, that should be the first motion and then the second motion, if you need to approve the variance, if that's what the board chooses to do, so.
I'll handle the first part. The, I move that this application be recognized as an unlisted action with no adverse environmental impacts.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Would you like to make a motion on the actual application?
I'll make a motion that the application of HMHAJ Properties LLC, where their property at seventy-five North Greeley Avenue, requesting a variance from the requirement that the access to a second-floor apartment not be at the front of the building. In this case, we will allow it to be at the front of the building for the following reasons. The properties on North Greeley are all similarly situated where they are so close together that they barely have any side yards. So, putting an access to it to the second floor apartment on the side of the building is impractical, mostly impossible. And the rear of the building, the first floor extends out, what did you say it was? Twenty-five feet? Twenty-five feet longer?
Thirty-five. Three-five.
Thirty-five, even better. Thirty-five feet longer than the second floor, which would make an impractical situation to put a stairway from the back of the building up over the roof and up to the second-floor apartment. Allowing the front entrance to be situated on the street will not create any safety concerns. Actually, it might even be easier for the firefighters to get into the building in this case. There'll be no other adverse effects to the environment or to the neighborhood in large. There is no other way to achieve the desired end other than to grant this variance. And start within six months and finish within a year, you should grant. Anything else on the measurements, Tom?
Not on measurements, but I request an ops box be placed so that the fire department has access to the apartments in the commercial.
I'll add that to my motion.
I'll second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Happy variance.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Myers.
Good evening. Steven Pescini, the architect, who are the owners and application for Forty-Nine Hilltop Drive. Rebecca and Jason Myers. We're here tonight, I'm here tonight, to represent them, requesting relief from this board to construct a portico over the front entrance of the house. It's over the existing stoop and the house is a legal non-conforming, existing non-conforming into the front yard for a front yard setback. It currently exists fifty-one feet past the property line, nine feet into the front yard. The request is to construct a portico, approximately about four feet and change. So, we're requesting a five-foot additional variance into the front yard. The addition, the construction, the purposes of covering the front entrance, right now, you approach from the north on this house, you walk down the walkway, you pass a mudroom entrance, and then you approach the front entrance of the house. For two reasons, they like a coverage over the front entrance for the elements and secondly, to create an entrance in this house. Right now, everybody comes, visitors, packages, everybody comes to the mudroom entrance. They'd like to lead people to the front entrance. So, those are the two reasons for that. Obviously, we're here seeking relief for that because we are exceeding the front yard variance. However, we are constructing it over the existing stoop. This stoop right here exists. We're constructing it over that. Two columns, a roof deck railing, and the leaders would be run down into the columns. And there's really no additional runoff either. Runoff, we intend to go exactly where it's going now. What we are seeking, I don't believe, is different than what you see in the neighborhood. I did not include this, I apologize, but this is just a map, a tax map of the area. This is the applicant's property. As you see, that black mark right there is what's exceeding currently past the front yard setback. And as you see, the other houses in the area, the black marks represent their houses and how they exceed past that same front yard setback. Obviously, when the code changed years ago and made them all legal non-existing, but we are not alone in this situation. In fact, speaking to the five points, the first one specifically, an undesirable effect in character of the neighborhood. We're asking to put a portico on this house. Forty-five, forty-one, and forty all have porticos on their front entrances currently. I can't speak to the rest of the neighborhood, but I know specifically, in that area, there are porticos. And those three houses also do exceed that front yard setback. I also don't believe that there's any other way feasible to do this because the existing front of the house is currently in the setback. I don't believe it's substantial. I know that currently it would be requested twenty-two and a half percent. However, being that we're already nine feet into the setback, we're only asking for additional five, I don't believe it's substantial. I mentioned in, there is negative impacts on the environment in existing properties in the area that we're covering. And as far as self-created, yes, it is. But I think that the effect that they're asking, the importance of what they're asking, I think I would use some of that.
Did I change you to stairs? The actual stairs?
No, stairs are existing, no.
Let the record show that there was no one who has appeared in opposition to the application. I move that we close the public hearing.
Okay.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I'll make a motion. I move that the Myers application for, you're sure of that dimension thirteen feet?
Well, I've actually asked to avoid the issue that the gentleman had earlier.
Yeah.
I've asked for additional, we're only coming up about four feet and asking for five feet. Because the house right now is currently situated at an angle. Until we get an Asbeld survey, I don't want any chances, so asking for additional.
So, the variance should be fourteen feet?
No, thirteen and a half is sufficient.
Oh, it is?
Yes.
Okay.
I'll take fourteen if you're willing to offer it.
Not a variance?
Okay, no, I think we'll be okay with thirteen and a half.
Okay. Thirteen point five feet. This is a legal non-conforming. There will be no undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood. The benefit cannot be sought through other means. The variance is not substantial. There will be no adverse impact on the physical environment. And they're self-created. It is given the location of the house on the property now. This is of minimal nature. You'll have six months to start, one year to complete. We'll need an Asbeld survey. That's second.
I'll second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Happy variance.
Thanks for your time. Thank you. Thanks very much.
I move that we adopt the meeting minutes for the September twenty-fifth, two thousand and nineteen, and October sixteenth, two thousand and nineteen meetings. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.